Do I have a motion to open the January tenth, two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four regular business meeting of the Harrison Central School District Board of Education?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none. Michelle, would you please do a roll call?
[inaudible]
Here.
[inaudible]
Here.
[inaudible]
Here.
[inaudible]
Here.
[inaudible]
Here.
[inaudible]
Thank you, Michelle.
Do I have a motion to recess into executive session? We have administration and teacher contractual matters to discuss.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? There are none. We are recessed. Do I have a motion to reopen the January tenth, two thousand twenty-three, regular business meeting of the Harrison Central School District Board of Education?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Michelle, would you please do a roll call?
[inaudible]
Here.
Here.
[inaudible]
Here.
[inaudible]
Here.
Here.
[inaudible]
Thank you, Michelle. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We have two sets of minutes from the November twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-three, and December thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three, to approve. Do I have a motion to accept the minutes?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none. At this point in time, if any member of the public would like to address the board, you may do so by approaching the podium, and please state your first and last name. But it does not appear that we have any public this evening. So moving on to the President's Update, first of all, Happy New Year. And I can't believe it's two thousand twenty-four, but here we are. And there is so much wonderful things, there are so many wonderful things happening within the Harrison Central School District. To begin, we had two high school digital art and design students, Senior Justin Suozzo and Junior Michael Brandt. They had their work featured in the School of Visual Arts Photography and Video Exhibit. "We, the present, today begins the future." And it features the work of forty-nine students selected from a global pool of applicants. So that is super impressive, and congrats to both of our students.
I think we're going to be able to post their work on our website, too, so they'll be able to see it.
We also, for the Regeneron, there were two thousand one hundred and sixty-two applications from seven hundred and twenty high schools across forty-six districts. And Lucia Lammers and Stella Perini were named semifinalists in the Regeneron Science Talent Search for two thousand twenty-four, which is the nation's oldest and most prestigious science and math competition for high school seniors. Each student named a scholar receives two thousand dollars, and each school receives two thousand dollars as well. So on January twenty-fourth, the winners will be announced. So stay tuned.
And I would just add to that, I want to congratulate Allison Blunt for her extraordinary stewardship of that program, but also later on tonight, we're going to be accepting the resignation for the purposes of retirement of Dr. Joan O'Keefe, who has been a real pioneer in expanding opportunities in science research, and so this is a credit to her hard work as well. So thank you.
Yes, thank you for that. The DECA team competed at the Regional DECA Competition, and students demonstrated their business knowledge in marketing, finance, entrepreneurship, and business administration, and participated in a series of role plays where they demonstrated communication skills, problem-solving techniques, and really just applied their business curriculum to various case studies and business situations. We had six students that placed first, and fifteen placed in the top five in their categories. It's a tremendous amount of students, so that is pretty impressive as well. We have upcoming concerts. I know everyone was notified from the storm the other night, but the LMK Grade Seven will be tomorrow evening, January eleventh, at six-thirty PM here at LMK, is the orchestra, seven forty-five band and chorus. And then Grade Six Chorus Concert will be on January sixteenth, and Grade Eighth, Grade Eight will be on January twenty-third.
And that's the reason you're sitting up here on the mountain tonight, because it's a concert and we can't sit in the mountain?
Yes. The National Speech and Debate Association, so we had two students, Beverly Kang earned at the high school from, so the following degrees were earned from December first to December thirty-first, so the month of December. Beverly Kang, special distinction, and Adina Naim, for special distinction as well. One thing, and I know it's kind of dating back, but what makes Harrison so special is that during the holidays, right before school went on break, the high school band, chorus, and orchestra, students and music teachers as well, they were spreading holiday cheer, and they were in attendance in all six schools, walking the halls with their music and instruments and just singing, and it's just so special. I don't, that doesn't happen everywhere.
We love it.
Yes.
It's a breath of fresh air.
Another exciting little, the Preston had a story walk. So what happens at Preston, they wrapped up a year of learning with a story walk, and on the last day of school before winter break, so they read the book, "The Floating Field", and how it was about how a group of Thai boys built their own soccer field. And during the story walk, they had opportunities to connect the concepts of being internationally-minded, open-minded, and just exploring identities. So students also studied the Thai language and the text and engaged in a science experiment just about floating and sinking.
Sounds like a warm-up for our presentation tonight, Madam President. You'll be surprised to see.
Congratulations once again. I don't think I ever miss a week of an update with the debate team. On a great performance at Newark's Tournament this past weekend, Jack Borman placed fifth, Reese Potash placed sixth, Jack Gessner placed ninth, Brooke Sciano placed fourteenth, and Andrew Gaffin and Flynn Williams had winning records. So congratulations to the debate team on these great performances. At Regis High School, Andrew Gaffin placed fifth, Beverly Kang was sixth, and Flynn Williams placed sixth in the novice division. And at the Blake School in Minnesota, Jack Gessner placed ninth. I mean, they're traveling, I think, almost every weekend.
They are serious debaters.
Yes.
No question about it.
Last year, ten thousand sophomores participated in the Hugh O'Brien Youth Leadership Seminars throughout the U.S. and Canada. Tenth graders are eligible to apply and be interviewed, and this selection committee chose one student to represent Harrison High School at the Hobby Leadership Seminar, and this year's recipient is Marianne Ramos Abreu. So congratulations.
That's a big deal.
Yeah, that is a big deal.
Second year in a row we had a candidate.
Moving on to athletics, Joe Croupy was named Section One Special Teams Player of the Year in football, and Arton Baldamed was named Defensive Lineman of the Year. Those are, that's a big deal as well.
That's a really big deal.
Yeah.
Congratulations.
The boys' soccer, Jason Viola commits to SUNY Potsdam, and Braden Sotile commits to Arcadia University. Congratulations, boys. Moving on to track and field, Andrew Aragio and Fabio Camacho are in first place in their respective events at the Lee Championship, pole vault, and in the weight throws. So pretty specific talents.
And nobody, nobody knows this, but Camacho threw fifty-one feet, two inches. That's an extraordinary shot put throw, so congratulations to him.
The Huskies basketball defeated Carmel fifty-seven to forty-six. Joe Croupy had twenty points, Matt McCoy sixteen points, and the Huskies defeated North Shore High School, also fifty-one, fifty. That was a really close game, behind a thirty-six-point performance by Matt McCoy.
That's pretty good.
Wow. Huh. That is really impressive. The Titans, our hockey team, defeated New Rochelle six to three to remain undefeated this season with a record of nine and no. That's incredible as well. We have all sorts of talent in every direction that we're.
You're on fire.
The girls' basketball team, our Huskies, defeated Panus fifty-five to forty-six. Mia Strazza led with twenty points and six assists. Stella Perini had fifteen points in the win in the slam dunk showcase.
Just want to mention Stella Perini is also our Regeneron semifinal.
Yeah, we're getting to that.
We've got lots of talented athletes here.
Yeah. And she, Stella Perini, was named Con Ed Athlete of the Week from December eighteenth to December twenty-second, and Mia Strazza was named MVP for the game with the twenty points and six assists. And Mia Strazza was also named Low-Hat Player of the Week for Week Seven of the basketball season. In wrestling, Carter Erbelding placed third at the prestigious Shoreline Invitational, and Carter competes in the two-hundred-and-eighty-five-pound division and has been having an excellent season. Sienna Cozali went five and oh at the Carlucci Tournament and was the most outstanding wrestler of the tournament. I love that. That's awesome.
That's really nice.
Sienna, go Sienna. Our cheerleaders earned first place at the Scardell Competition in the game day category and second place in the traditional cheer category. They were first in the UCA Regional Competition in the Small Varsity, second traditional division, and earned a bid to the Nationals. The cheerleaders have been very successful.
They've had a great year.
And, you know, just keep an eye on, there is so much happening, so keep an eye on the district calendar. There's a bunch of PTA meetings coming up, like I mentioned, the winter concerts, and on Monday, January fifteenth, is Martin Luther King, so schools will be closed. And with that, I'll pass it over to you.
Thank you very much. I always enjoy watching Mrs. Cozak get more excited as she reads each of these things happening in our system.
Ooh.
So hi, everybody.
There's a lot to be proud of.
Welcome back. Happy New Year. Thanks to all of you parents yesterday for cooperating with our emergency dismissal. That's why we practice. We know it's inconvenient. We know there's a lot of traffic around our schools for a brief period of time, but our thinking was the winds were supposed to be extremely high, and we don't want children walking home in high winds because the, you know, the outcomes could be disastrous. So thank you for your cooperation. Thank you to all of our building principals and all of my team for making that happen seamlessly, but it doesn't happen unless people cooperate. And a reminder, always update your emergency contacts, because we do not release your children unless there is a person on that emergency contact. So thank you for that. We were really busy over the holiday break. Just want to give a particular thanks to Tim and the entire maintenance crew and the custodial staff who were here for a lot of the time. We have been working around the clock on trying to get ready to implement some of the improvements that our bond is going to allow us to put in place. Very excited to say that all of the exterior windows in the buildings that are going to get new windows have already been examined, and they're beginning to finalize the plans for that. We are also looking at all of our security upgrades, our camera upgrades. I'm also excited to announce that the repeaters that are going to go in all of our schools so that our police department can always communicate internally in all of our buildings will be completed by the end of this month. So we have been working really, really hard on many, many things. Also want to thank Dennis and his team, because we think we have finally cracked the code of putting a handicapped access to the gymnasium, and we may also be able to say we're going to be able to make the lower level of your school handicapped accessible as well. We met today again with the architects, and that plan is really taking shape quite nicely. So very, very excited about that. Before we shift to what is a very exciting presentation, we're going to be sharing some wonderful news tonight about our proposal for implementing the Primary Years World Language Program, but you're going to hear more about that at your elementary PTA meetings, either from me, Mrs. Egan, Dr. Mulholland, or your principal, or all of us. We'll let you know more about that in the future. But before I step into the presentation, I just want to take a moment to honor the faculty at the Preston School and other members of my team. We averted a tragedy at the Preston School because of the way in which we collectively see and value one another. And it's so interesting that Mr. Courtwright and Mrs. Benjamin are here, because they're two of my heroes tonight, and Mrs. Egan, who ran over to lend support. But we had a tragic, what could have been a tragic outcome averted because of the fast action of the custodians, the aides, Lauren Benjamin and her role as instructional coach, Dennis wasn't in the building, he happened to be in a meeting with me, our school nurse, our SRO. And the thing that makes me proudest is, of course, we're so happy that the teacher is going to be well and is making progress, but I went the next day and I met with all of the individuals that were involved in saving a life. And what was so compelling and just beyond moving to me was every one of them said the same thing to me, not knowing what the other had said. It really wasn't me, it was the head custodian, it was the nurse, it was Lauren, it was the aide, it was the secretary in the office. And what we always remind ourselves here is that we do not see people by title, we see everybody as having incredible value and inherent worth. And in that moment, what makes me proudest, and it's certainly a credit to you, Dennis, for the culture you have helped to foster there, is that nobody asked for an invitation to help. Nobody felt that it wasn't their place to help. And because we have built the kind of community built on care and mutual respect, somebody's life was changed for the better. And so tonight, I just want to say a special thanks, not only to you folks, but to the entire Preston faculty and staff. And you were quick to point out, and as was your SRO, credit also goes to Brian for, and we also give him a hard time, for forcing us to kind of practice and work with our school safety teams, and in that day, that practice couldn't have been any more valuable. So the hands and the hearts of everybody in this community touched that classroom on that day. So I'm very proud of who we are, and it really is a celebration of what our board believes and what we live every day. So thank you. And without further ado, I'd like to bring Lisa up to the microphone. Dr. Mulholland is our Assistant Superintendent, and I think she's going to throw the first few slides to me, or am I wrong?
You're correct.
Thanks a lot. I've got to find my presentation here. So I'm very excited to share this presentation, quite literally excited. This has been a long time coming, and what you're going to see tonight are the beginnings of the powerful effect of an organization adopting a philosophy kindergarten through twelfth grade. And as you know, we adopted the IB at the high school level more than a decade ago, and we just finished our five-year review of the Middle Years Program, and we are so close to being a full IB district. You'll hear more about that later. But when I selected this program, if you wouldn't mind going to the next slide, it was based on this idea. And what an incredibly powerful idea this is in this moment in time. We want to give kids the ability to develop and see each other more fully, culturally and in every other way. And you're going to hear a lot tonight about how our schools are helping kids to celebrate their own identity and respect the identity of others, which, to me, is probably more powerful than anything else we can teach them. In addition to that, you're going to see the benefit the IB program brings, because it helps us as an organization develop capacities in learners, these IB traits that we talk about, to be principled, to be open-minded. Those are the kinds of things that follow you through the rest of your life and help you develop your sense of purpose and character. So our journey has taken a long time. I think we have a timeline popping up above my head. There, you can go all the way back to two thousand six and see when we started talking about it. I actually introduced the idea in nineteen ninety-nine, before anybody was listening to me, as the Assistant Superintendent for Instruction. And it took wing with a lot of hard work from many, many people. Our retired but esteemed colleague, Michael Greenfield, was a really important steward of this program early on. And then we wanted to introduce it at the middle years, and it exceeded our expectations. If Mr. Freed were here tonight, he would sing the praises of the power of the Middle Years Program to transform the middle school into something truly spectacular. And I know Mrs. Egan was a large part of that in her brief time as Assistant Principal, and you'll hear from her in her new role. But we've been on this journey, and I look across the faces sitting here tonight, Lauren and Jen Markarian and Jen Spagnola and Dr. Conrad, who've been working tirelessly to advance curriculum so that kids have a way of studying, a framework for studying, and an empowering way, because what we know is, kids do not learn by sitting still, they need to be engaged. I'm looking at you, because we have kids who learn by being engaged. They don't want information dumped in them, they want to participate in their own learning. Tonight, you're going to hear about that journey, and I am so excited for Lisa to introduce what is about to come, because it'll talk about all the things I just mentioned, the importance of the philosophy, the kind of work going on in the classroom, helping kids identify who they are and respect one another, and also you're going to hear, I think, an incredible next step in how we're going to implement world languages at the elementary level. So without further ado, Dr. Mulholland, I turn it over to you.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Heims, Mr. Courtwright, and Mrs. Egan are here and actually speaking tonight, but what we're going to be sharing is really the collective effort of so many teachers, so many members of our leadership team, and no one piece could be really attributed to any single person. It's really about our collective effort. As Dr. Wall said, the Primary Years Program offers us a framework. So the great opportunity in that framework is we get to make it whatever we want it to mean for Harrison, as long as we're living up to these ideals. The challenge with that is that they're not handing over to us a curriculum that we just start to implement. Every piece of this framework is something that we've got to look at, consider, and think about, how does it fit into what we're already doing, and how would we like to make adjustments to enhance it so that the students experience a coherent learning kind of journey from kindergarten through twelfth grade? And so that our students are prepared for both the Middle Years Program and the Diploma Program. So tonight, we want to share some subtle shifts that have had a big impact, and part of that framework that you just saw in the last slide are these six transdisciplinary themes. When we first looked at them, I mean, my reaction was, okay, these seem pretty simple, no problem, we'll, we'll think about this, and I'm sure the work that we're doing will fit under these categories. But by looking at these, these transdisciplinary themes, we've seen an incredible impact on the work that we're doing in the classrooms and on student learning experiences. So tonight, we want to highlight three examples for you. The first one, Mrs. Heims is going to share with you some shifts that took place in curriculum, specifically in Grade Two, through the transdisciplinary theme of sharing the planet. Then Mr. Courtwright's going to share some shifts that occurred in a school-wide event through the theme, "Who We Are." And finally, Mrs. Egan's going to share our plans for implementing world language, and she'll touch a little bit on the transdisciplinary theme of how we express ourselves. So.
Thank you, Lisa. What I love about those six themes is that they can be revisited throughout the course of your life, depending on where you are in the journey. Those questions are always relevant, even as a senior in high school. Good evening, Mrs. Heims.
Good evening, Dr. Wall.
Mrs. Heims and I are having a little thing. Her husband's a Dallas Cowboys fan, it's not going over well here.
Thanks for sharing that.
I love him. I didn't say I didn't love him.
But thank you, Dr. Wall, and to the Board of Education for allowing us to be a part of sharing some work tonight that we're really excited about, and to the elementary team for being here tonight. This really is everybody's work. So in staying with the theme of subtle shifts and big impact, prior to the Primary Years Program coming to Harrison, our ELA program, our science program, and our social studies programs were already quite rigorous and involved a certain level of choice for students. Since moving to the Primary Years Program, the units are now more integrated, our approach is more integrated, and this has provided greater opportunity for students to see a connection between the content and their own lives. I'm going to share a specific second-grade example of you tonight, with you tonight. You'll hear from a second-grade teacher as well, and you'll both see and hear a bit from some of our students from last year and from some third graders this year who had a lot to say about what they learned last year. So as Dr. Mulholland shared, this particular transdisciplinary unit theme was sharing the planet. So the second-grade science prior to PYP used to be about plants, how they grow, how they thrive. I think everybody in this room probably did this unit when they were in elementary school, and what our responsibility is in kind of taking care of the earth. Students did have reading and writing opportunities within the science unit prior, but for the most part, the ELA content was taught rather separately. The PYP has now shifted to this big idea of interdependence. So we have second graders at a conceptual level, learning about this idea of interdependence, again, under the transdisciplinary unit of sharing the planet. Students are now learning that humans, animals, and plants within an ecosystem need each other, take care of each other, and that students have a responsibility to take care of them beyond what they learn in school. This work exists outside of the classroom, it exists outside of the unit, and it became a part of the students' lives. So let's take a look at what it really looked like for students. So the students did have great opportunity to grow their own curiosity during, during this unit. The students were able to do a case study of sorts on the importance of honeybees, what they offer the environment, what they need, and our responsibility to care for them. Connected to the science content, the students learned and engaged in all of the literacy skills that would have been taught to them prior in reading and writing units of studies. They learned to compare and contrast, to summarize, to determine importance, main idea, communicating persuasively. Those still lived in this transdisciplinary unit of study. The difference between how they learned it prior in their ELA block versus how they learned it here was that these, these ELA skills were taught in service of understanding this bigger idea. So they weren't taught in isolation, they were taught concurrently with the science content, creating a real depth for our students, and they were actually able to do a lot with what they learned coming out of that. So here are some examples of what students put into motion as a result of their learning. Oh, sorry. Okay. So the boy on the left is studying independently about the biodiversity in the Arctic, specifically the Arctic fox. The students in the middle are doing a public service announcement of sorts to their community about what it takes for the honeybees to thrive and making sure that the community knows that it's important for the honeybees to be able to thrive and survive, and what we can do as a community to make sure that that happens. The girl on the right, and I believe these are Preston students, Dennis, she's writing a letter to her parents, a persuasive letter, because the students did learn to still write persuasively in this unit, asking them to plant a wildflower garden in their home, because wildflowers are what honeybees need to thrive and survive. They learned the science content and the ELA content in a more connected way, but just as important, their enthusiasm for what they were learning was contagious. Students being able to choose what they chose to study and research produced visible engagement and excitement. They were invested in their learning as a result of relevant, connected experiences as well as the element of choice. So here you see the beekeeper. The beekeeper did come to all four elementary schools. If you had an elementary-aged child last year who was in the second grade, you would have heard about this. A really significant part of the Primary Years Program is the idea of student reflection on their own learning and what they will do with what they've learned. So because the unit included a case study on honeybees, a beekeeper came to all four elementary schools and talked about what the students learned in real time. I was a little afraid of the beekeeper, the students were not. But here's, but here's what happens when you see students lean in. Like, if you look at that photo, the students are literally leaning in, and I was not, I was kind of in the back, watching the beekeeper and the students, and when they leaned in, I moved forward. And when they leaned in, I moved forward because I really wanted to see what was so engaging for them and to hear the questions that they were asking the beekeeper. They discussed how plants and animals need each other, and students got to reflect on how they can contribute to their survival. Part of the reflection also, also included who and what they're connected to and who they rely on to survive and thrive. Again, the idea of interdependence and connectedness was the focus for the students. Everything they read about, wrote about, experienced, and then continued to research on their own was anchored in the concept of interdependence. So we want to hear from some, from the teacher perspective, and we're going to see some student work in a minute. So this is a video of a second-grade teacher's perspective on the impact on students after completing the unit for the first time. This is Carolyn Roskowsky. It's coming.
Oh, I would have done it. Nope, just hit, hit the back button. It's just a click. There you go.
Thanks.
So when I think about the outcomes for students, what I saw was that their learning went much deeper than just how can a plant survive? And they began to think about what is my role with nature, how does nature impact me? And especially in the case that you, that we did with bees, they thought about how these impact the environment, how do I impact the environment, how do I impact bees, and that interconnectedness. In addition, they also started to read about topics related to the unit, and then also that broadened them into other topics that they became interested in. So for example, they might be reading about life cycles, they might be reading about pollination, they might also be reading about deserts or tundras or Antarctica, and all those topics led them into other topics of interest.
So again, this, this idea of a subtle shift lifting, leading into, you know, a, a big impact, I think that you'll also see this in the next slide. I can share some student work with you. Thanks, Dr. Leyber. Great. So you just heard Mrs. Roskowsky talk about her perspective as a teacher in terms of how it impacted the students and the difference that she saw between the way students engaged with this particular science unit as an isolated science unit before and as a more integrated unit with ELA. The piece of writing on the, on the left is a student who had an interest in, in animals and in the preservation of animals. And he wrote about the danger of the modernization of roads and what that did to the, to the deer and to the other animals in certain mountainous and, and forest areas. But he took it a little bit further. He didn't just talk about what the problem was. He came up with a solution, and he decided, and after doing some research, decided that some bridges were built in that area that could both allow the transportation to evolve and continue, but would also protect the animals. So that is absolutely a level up from the kind of writing and research that a seven-year-old would have done as, you know, as a result of, of the science unit. We also decided to talk to some third graders who experienced the unit last year. You know, we talk a lot in Harrison about stickiness, right? What do, what do parents walk away with from an experience? What do our students walk out of a classroom with an experience? So we decided to test it out. Mrs. Markarian actually went into a random third-grade class, talked to these three students, and said, "Do you remember?" It, it's really not called the beekeeper unit, but that, that's what we informally call it. "What do you, what do you remember about, about the, about the beekeeper unit?" And they had a lot to say. They were very committed to the fact that they had a responsibility to make sure that honeybees were protected and that they got what they needed. They felt very strongly that this is a responsibility that even a seven-year-old or an eight-year-old could, could carry. They remembered it. They were passionate about it. They were excited about it. It stuck with them. And when we think about, you know, how do we know it's, you know, we ask ourselves a lot, right? How do we know it's working? This is for sure a piece of evidence. Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to say while you're standing there, though, that those three people sitting behind you, that, that unit had to be built by somebody. And it was built with great leadership of our instructional coaching team and Maggie, and also Dr. O'Keefe was a big part of that unit. And our teachers, who leaned in, and the rollout, it was a very challenging unit. The rollout was really meticulous, supportive, and that's one of the reasons it's, it really soared. And of course, now you have to meet that standard in every unit you design from here on and the rest of eternity.
Yeah. It, it's a good point, Dr. Wool, because Dr. Wool, Dr. Mulhall mentioned that PYP gives us a framework, but then we have to, as you said, build from the ground up. This is a great example of, of that work, and it is being done in, in, in every unit.
I love this piece because, to me, it captures what we've been trying to, to do for so long. If a child is engaged, everything else follows. So it's just great. Thank you, Beth.
So at this time, I'd like to invite my colleague Dennis Courtwright up. He is going to talk to you about PYP beyond the classroom.
All right. You tell James I forgive him for his Dallas commitment.
I'm sure that will resonate.
Mr. Courtwright, how are you?
Hello, good evening.
It's great to see you again.
Nice to see everyone. Well, I do want to make a comment about the bees unit because I had.
Please.
I saw it in action, and the, the very same class I saw not a couple of weeks prior to the unit, when I went in, there was, they were so in flow. At first, I thought they were in trouble. I'm like, why are they so quiet? And it's because they were all so engaged, and they were helping each other research. But, but that's what it looked like in action. They were so, that they lost sense of time. And so it was such a, it was such a great, it was such a joy to.
It is a joy.
So, good evening. I'm, I'm here to share with you Multicultural Week and what that looked like this school year. But I'd like to share with you that this is my ninth year as principal of the Preston School, and it certainly went very fast. It's been a lot of fun. It is a lot of fun. It's brought me a lot of joy. And this year's Multicultural Night is a highlight of my principalship. And I'm going to share with you why, and it certainly is greatly influenced by the Primary Years Program. So before I begin, I'd like, Lauren Benjamin's going to share with you a brochure that we handed out for the evening event. Am I doing all right? I won't leave, not gonna.
You want him to pull that down a little bit? If you want, Dennis, you can pull it closer to you.
Thank you.
I already loved the opening, Who We Are.
So last school year, as we were preparing for Multicultural Week, we received feedback from families that what we were planning for, the experience we had was limiting, that it really, some, some students didn't know how they were going to be able to engage. And they, they asked us to reconsider and to offer more options. And while that was initially hard to hear because that wasn't the intent, they were right. It was something we did have to go back. And so we, you know, I told the group of teachers that were helping plan this that, you know, we have to embody the IB learner traits, and we have to be reflective right now. We're going to have to take some risk, and we're going to have to be open-minded to reengage. And so we reconsidered our goals. We partnered with our, our colleague Jen Egan, the Director of ENL World Languages, Marlene Colonna, Director of Social Studies, Lauren Benjamin, Instructional Specialist for Preston School, and the committee of teachers got together to, to replan and rethink the week. And that's when it occurred to us that, why don't we tie the transdisciplinary theme, Who We Are, to that week? So that was what initiated what occurred this, this. At the beginning of every school year, teachers work on make, creating a classroom community with, with the intention of having a sense of belonging. And so we started with the IB learner trait of being open-minded as a school-wide, school-wide focus. And what was, what's really effective in this definition is that, first, you understand your own culture, your own person, your own personal history, and you value that of others. And that we seek and evaluate a range of point of views and that we're willing to grow from that. So that was something that we put a lot of attention on as, as we began the school year. And then we anchored to this metaphor of an iceberg. Because it dawned on us that some of the activities we had planned were also some of the activities that we had planned for the beginning of the school year. Some of the activities are, can be seen at surface level. And they're important, right? So we might start the year by saying, you know, how old you are, when's your birthday, what books do you like, what's your favorite color? All good, all important first steps, but is that really going to create a sense of belonging? Is the child really going to see themselves in their school? And so we asked first, as a faculty, two questions. What's one thing about, what's one thing people wouldn't know about you by looking at you? And how do you define belonging? What does it feel like to belong? So third graders this year, for example, drew a self-portrait with one part of their visual outside and one with imagery of what, what's inside of them. And actually, most of what, we talked, the kids said, you know, most of what makes me, you can't see. And so we thought about, how do we make sure that we can see that? How do we make sure that we can anchor that on a daily basis? So, so we thought about surface-level connections a lot, and that's what, that was what, what the problem was with our Multicultural Night planned for, for, for last school year. And so we certainly wanted to do better than what we had originally planned. You know, fifth graders, each year, we do ask kids, what does belonging mean to you? And this year's fifth grade said, you know, you know you belong when you don't have to change anything about yourself. That's how you know where you belong. So, so we stayed with this metaphor and this use of an iceberg, and we connected it to many several activities to ensure that we are causing deeper connections. So here's an example of students who had, chose to, which IB learner traits they identified with. This one student says he's curious because I'm always wondering about something. Another student says that she's a risk-taker because she's not afraid to try, to try new things. And she's also always willing to speak up in class, which is something that's really important. And so activities like this occurred at each of the grade level. Teachers really thought and used this example of, of the metaphor of the iceberg. You know, recently, at, throughout the school year, new students joined our community. And the week before break, we were going to get some new students in January. And so I read, I read the book, The Brand New Kid by Katie Couric. It's a really good book about a kid who has, you know, he comes to the school, and he, the kids see him as different. And so, but the, the character who, but one of the characters who befriends him realizes, if you just get to know him, you realize he isn't different. He's got so many wonderful things. The thing is, you just don't know him. And the kids all said, that reminds us, that reminds us of the iceberg. That reminds us of the connection. So we talked about, yeah, we might want to start with surface-level connections. Where are you from? What was your last school? But we've got to intentionally give time and think about how are we going to cause a deeper connection so that student, just like you, feels like they belong. So students went from IB learner traits that they identify with to identifying IB learner traits in characters that they read. And my colleagues would tell you that teaching kids the difference between external traits and internal traits in characters is challenging. Kids oftentimes confuse them. And, you know, we, we always think about what are some really good strategies. But this year's, I have to say, as early as second grade, the kids are automatically thinking about the iceberg. They're automatically thinking about what's below the surface, what's above. That's something that we saw, and so that's an external trait. But when we really know this character, we really know them deeply, and that's an internal trait. So they seamlessly made, made the connection through that. So we see example here, Zink is a risk-taker because he's not afraid to go into the scary house. Ava is caring because she's nice to her friends all of the time. So those are connections that, that are being made. At the end of every lesson, we, you'll hear teachers sort of assess from kids how they're feeling about what they've learned, you know, on a scale sometimes of one, two, or three. How are you feeling? But now you're also here, what trait did you utilize to complete the task? What trait was, made you be successful? So here's an example of a science investigation where kids had to build bridges out of recycled materials. And one student says he was principled because he let his partner design, choose the design of the bridge because he wanted to be fair. Another student says he was open-minded when he built, when we built the bridge because he listened to others' ideas. That's really, really important. And so this is the work that occurred all prior to Multicultural Week. It was building upon your identity, noticing identities in others, building upon and really getting to know the IB learner traits, which led us to Multicultural Week. And I want to give credit to the Preston teachers because in the fall, so much is happening as we're, as we're getting to school year started, and to, and to launch with this kind of event was certainly a huge undertaking. But they did exceptional work, and, and as always, they partnered well and thought very creatively. And, and so today, as, as I was telling a teacher, I'm coming to talk about what we did. She said, you know, Dennis, it caused us to really connect. And I, she's like, it's hard to describe, but we really, that was really such a great way to start the year. And so each grade level, and I want to make sure I put on my glasses here, before the evening event, so during Multicultural Week, there, there is an evening event where we have performances and traditionally food for, for families to come and, and celebrate with. But this year, we added identity projects, and I'll explain what those are. Here, in this picture, this is kindergarten. In kindergarten, they, the kids created a, a growing, growing into who I am trees. They, they described, they cherished family traditions, they chose favorite meals, personal interests, symbols that show who they are, and that sets the foundation for them for embracing individuality and forming, forming deeper connections. This is first grade and fifth grade. And in first grade, students did treasure boxes where they got to include symbols and artifacts that, that were important to them, that showed aspects of, of their personality and their connection to their families. Fifth graders delved into the origins of their name, researching meanings, and they created graffiti art that reflected their identity. And they also expressed poetic verses by crafting and captivating word splashes. So that was really great. And I have to tell you that I took for granted the things that I thought I knew about my students. And when I walked around saying, that's how you got your name? Or that's what your name means? Like, that resonates with me and has stayed with me ever since I've seen that, seen that, seen them displayed. This is one of my favorite. This is a QR code, and if you, the, the code takes you to a link of a live audio of the student expressing, reading an I am poem. And it showcases who they are, where they come from, and what they love. And so it's a journey into them expressing themselves. Some teachers chose to use that during parent-teacher conferences as a way to, to start the conversation with parents so that they can. So this focus on identity just, wasn't just about Multicultural Week or Multicultural Night. It just, it, it enhanced it, but it was really the work that we needed to do at the beginning of the school year.
I saw that QR code. It's just, it's unbelievable. If I were the parent of that child and I went back to school that night, and I, that's the experience I had, it would change everything I think about school. I feel like my child is seen, like they can express who they are, like they're comfortable in their own skin. It was, it was fabulous. I don't know who did it, but it's, this is brilliant.
Yeah. That's a, a huge credit to the third-grade team at Preston School. And so now we get to the evening event, and this was, we had not done this event since, prior to, since COVID because we had some logistical issues and that we weren't able to, to have the event. So we brought it back. And it would traditionally was student performances and food. And this year, we added the identity projects, which meant that they were displayed around the school and rooms. So Lauren Benjamin and her colleague Smartly decided that the kids, to practice agency, were going to be the docents. They were going to show families what they were, what they, what they were looking at so that they understood what was behind each of the projects. And one parent said, you know, my daughter's performing, but she's more excited about being a docent. And so they took it, they took the job seriously. They certainly showed some agency. And so we received lots of great feedback about the experiences, experiences that they had. And another addition to the food portion. And another addition to the food portion was for families to complete a card to saying, why is this food dish important to you? What is it about, what's the tradition? If it's tied to your culture or just tied to something that you think is important for us to know? And you'll see, you see the students reading it before they go, before, unlike me, who just took the food sometimes, you can see that they were reading what they were about to try, what they were about to taste. And this is Israeli pastry that's been influenced from Spaniards, which is also influenced by the shape of an empanada. So it was a really insightful experience. And I can't tell you the pride when we selected food, when we took food from families, that they were sharing. And everyone told me I had to try their dish, so I tried.
I'm sure that was a real struggle for you.
Yeah, it really was. And then there were student performances, and I'm so proud of my students. You know, they really took risks, and we really emphasized that. And these, you know, these students, the students who remembered the last Multicultural Night event, I think, were our fifth graders, and they vaguely remembered it. So these were all new students. We showed them videos, we showed them what it could be, and of course, they had agency to make it better. And so we had traditional Italian dances, Palestinian dances, dances from Bolivia and Peru. And we also had a poem spoken, recited in Italian. We had a Portuguese song. We had a Native American dance. And one student taught herself the Irish jig. I thought, at first, I thought she was going to need like a supporting cast. And I said, are you sure? And her mom said, she's trying, she's doing it, and she nailed it. So it was really, really inspiring.
She's a risk taker.
Yeah, she certainly is a risk taker for doing that. And so to close, I received this email that evening when I went to close the office, and it just so captured what we wanted the event to be. And if I could just read it out loud, you know, I just wanted to say a quick note to thank you and your staff for the incredible multicultural night that was organized to embrace our identities, watching our community come together, students leading performances, spaces that highlighted inclusivity, and connections between families was heartwarming. I'm so proud to be part of such a thoughtful community. I also want to acknowledge, and I love this part, that Samuel J. Preston is a beautiful, accepting, and ridiculously awesome school place to learn. So now you know why it's such a highlight for me. And I'm so incredibly grateful that the primary years program has greatly influenced how we're thinking, how we're thinking about our events. And so, thank you. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Dennis. That is an excellent example of how to take the most from PYP and make it meaningful in the lives of kids. Wonderful work. I know that's the work of an incredible faculty and instructional coach as well.
Absolutely. And next up is Jennifer Egan.
Speaking of incredible.
Yeah, Jennifer Egan, Director of ENL World Language. It's a long title.
She has many titles, but her best is Tommy's Mommy.
That's right. It's my favorite one, too.
We had a little practice session last night around 6:15 because everybody had to go home early. And Lisa and I were just amazed that Jen could actually stay focused, work on the Google Slides, and have Tommy crawling all over her. It was very impressive. That's differentiated instruction at its finest.
I had a secret weapon. I cooked him about a half a pound of bacon before the meeting started.
There you go.
Well, good evening, everyone. It's so great to be here today, and I'm so excited to speak about our proposal for the elementary world languages program, which has really come a long way since the last time I was here speaking about it. So I thought, just as a little reminder of where we were, would help us see how far we've come thanks to the collective effort of this amazing team that I'm just so proud to be a part of. So about a year ago, I was standing up here, and we were talking about things that we were thinking about. We were following guidance from IB, who tells us that when we're thinking about implementing a world language program at the elementary school, we know that it's really beneficial because every learner benefits from having access to different languages and through that access to different cultures and perspectives. And we know that language provides a vehicle for learners to engage with the world and relate to and accept responsibility for that IB mission to help to create a better world and more peaceful world through intercultural understanding and respect. And we also know that philosophically, when we're thinking about how do we want to teach a language, we know that students can learn language, for example, learning new vocabulary. We know that they can learn about language, so learning how to spell a word, write a poem. And we know that they can learn through language, that literacy piece in reading. So taking this all into consideration, we were thinking about, at the time, creating PYP units designed around those transdisciplinary themes where students will learn language and learn about language. And through language, they will build a foundation for international-mindedness. And at that time last year, we were thinking about grades four and five. And we were still considering what languages we were going to be offering, what professional development was going to be necessary for classroom teachers and our new world language teachers. And we were leveraging our French and Italian curiosity camps to think about strategies and best practices. So now fast forward to where we are today, and again, I just, I have to mention it one more time because I think it's been a common theme throughout the night, the collective efforts of the team and the team as a resource. Through collaboration with the principals, the assistant principals, and the instructional specialists at the elementary schools, we're proud to present a proposal for world languages in grades two through five that would involve two full-time teachers, two full-time world language teachers. So in this model, we have teachers spending five weeks in each of our schools twice a year. So for five weeks, one teacher would push in to fourth and fifth grade classes for 30 minutes a day, and one teacher would push in to second and third grade classes for 30 minutes a day to complete one full world languages unit. Now, you might be wondering why the five weeks in one part of the year and in another part of the year as opposed to an entire year of instruction. What we found in our research is that schools who have world languages in the elementary schools who have it throughout the entire year tend to sacrifice the amount of time that the teacher is in the classroom. So we see models where the teacher comes in for 10 minutes, 15 minutes, and we didn't feel like that was enough time to have a real, true beginning, middle, and end to a lesson. The other thing that we see sacrificed sometimes is that the teacher only goes in maybe once every six days, so there's not that continuity of instruction. And we thought it would be much more valuable to have the teacher in there every day to have a more condensed experience. And we feel really good about the 30 minutes a day because it's a full and valuable time for world languages, and it's also really deferential and respectful to all of the other really important and wonderful things our elementary school kiddos are doing. So in thinking about what we wanted as outcomes of this program, we've decided that the goals of the program would be to expose students to languages other than English in a language-rich environment where the target language is used by the teachers and the students to the greatest extent possible. And we want to build a linguistic foundation to prepare students to build proficiency at the secondary level. Now, when thinking about which languages we want to offer, when we're thinking about inviting candidates to apply for the positions, we would advertise for the three languages that we offer at the secondary level, so French, Italian, and Spanish. And of course, thinking about our most requested languages, we would prioritize Spanish and So thinking a little bit about what the student experience would be like, which is really the fun part about thinking about this program. We want students to experience two units of study that exist outside of the PYP program of inquiry, which means that they're not intentionally transdisciplinary with other subject areas, but they could be incidentally transdisciplinary, which is why it's really great that the classroom teacher will remain in the room while the world language instruction happens because they'll be able to point out connections throughout the year until the world language teacher returns. So one of the units that we were thinking about implementing would be a unit about who we are, using language to share information about ourselves, which is a really natural start to language learning, talking about yourself. And then that idea, that transdisciplinary theme of how we express ourselves, so how learning language helps us to become better communicators. Now, all students in this model will have the opportunity for world language exposure. So this includes students who have other services like AIS or ENL or in our CD class, our ESP class, because we're going to be implementing a rotating schedule, which I'll talk about in a little while. So just continuing with the student experience a little bit, these are just some student-facing goals for this program. So students would be able to, by the end of these two units, greet people, say how they feel, and ask others how they feel. Say and recognize numbers, ask people what their age is, talking about the calendar, saying what they like and don't like, describing themselves, describing their family, and describing school, which we think builds a really nice foundation for study at the secondary level. And of course, as this program continues and grows, we would really be mindful of creating a good articulation between the elementary program and the secondary program. So this is just a sample, just talking about that rotating schedule, thinking about the teacher experience now. This is a sample schedule for a fourth and fifth grade teacher at Parsons Elementary School. And in this model, the world language teacher would push into those classrooms. But if you follow the color coding on this chart, you'll see that they would be going into the classrooms at different times of day. So if a student were to say have AIS from 10 o'clock to 10:30, but that was where their world language class would meet once a cycle, that would be the only time that they would miss it. So they would have exposure to the world language experience five out of six days of the cycle. So we're really excited about that because it gives everybody a chance to have this experience. And that is where we are at this time.
Well, you know, first of all, I just need to remind everybody that's watching, you make this sound so seamless and elegant and perfect. And the amount of research and collaboration and effort that had to go in to not only coming up with a coherent model, but as you ended, a model that ensures every child's going to have equity of opportunity to access this program is as important. And you know, each of our elementary schools are different sizes with different needs. And the four principals are fully committed to this model. It just makes such great sense. And the research that you did to not just replicate what we have, but to make it far better is just really a credit to your hard work. So thank you so much, Jen.
Thank you.
And now we'll open it up to questions from the board for anyone in the audience other than questions about the Dallas Cowboys. Everything else is. I have a question that I think is important. Could somebody just describe the journey of developing? And it could be even one of our coaches of the Pollinator Unit, because I think that that is an exemplary exercise in what it looks like to build these powerful, engaging, constructivist units. So who wants to answer that question for the superintendent?
I feel all the eyes looking at me.
All right, I guess you, short straw, Lauren.
I think I'm...
You need to come to the microphone or Andy will yell at me.
So we started off looking at what are the standards that we want to ensure that all kids at each grade level will have experience, exposure, and/or mastery, depending upon what time of year the unit was going to look at. We looked at what the science unit was previously so that the shift for teachers wouldn't necessarily be learning new content as well, but tweaking the content to match the PYP kind of philosophy of how are we also impacting the world, how are our actions, how are we making a better place for ourselves? We looked at saying, we don't want to say this is a B unit, even though we kind of go, oh, it's the beekeeper unit. That was the case study, and we were trying to help kids to start to make generalizations with that. So we started to look at, like, you can't do everything well every moment. So I can't, if my teacher reading amazingly and have the science be amazing at the same time, so is this going to be more of a science lesson that has literacy in it? Or is this going to be more of a literacy lesson that also has some science in it? And so we helped teachers to make that distinction, and we went through and were really strategic in saying, in this line of inquiry, the science is going to drive the learning. And in this line of inquiry, the reading is going to drive it. In this line of inquiry, the writing's going to drive it. That didn't mean that reading and writing weren't happening throughout, but at each time, something else took more of a priority so that we could ensure that our standards were also being met. And we worked with teachers not only to develop the units, but then kind of turnkey it so that as people were developing it and developing those understandings, they also had an opportunity to share that with each other, collaborate, and grow with it.
That's just such a great answer.
Great answer. She just...
Well, you know, I will say to you, the reason I asked the question in all seriousness, so you see those three people sitting there, they spent literally hundreds and hundreds of hours of developing a unit that would stand as an exemplar for our teachers to model. But as importantly, and those of you that have been in school know this, when you start throwing lots of new things at teachers, they can shut down, they can feel overwhelmed. The buy-in, the way in which it was scaffolded, the rollout, and I'm looking at my principals nodding their heads, was just incredible. Teachers were enthusiastic. As a matter of fact, Lisa and I were walking through the hall in Parsons School, and some teacher dragged us in, "I'm doing the B unit." And she dragged, who gets excited about this stuff? It's the quality of the planning and the involvement. In the same way that kids are engaged when it's meaningful work, teachers are engaged when it's meaningful work. So thank you very much. I just think this was, for me, very heartening. I appreciate all of your hard work. Any other questions for the group before we close tonight?
That was great.
Okay, thanks very much. Go home to bed or whatever else you need to do. It was wonderful. Thanks.
Yeah, I appreciate it.
Do you want to see them before they go? Or just carry on? Okay, let's carry on.
Moving on to the personnel report, I will take the personnel report on consent unless anyone objects. Seeing none, A, certificated personnel, one resignation for the purpose of retirement, two, resignation, three, regular appointment, SED clearance received, four, temporary appointment, SED clearance received, five, extra compensation appointment, six, change of status, seven, leave of absence without pay, B, non-certificated personnel, one, regular appointment, SED clearance submitted, C, other, one contracted service provider. Do I have a motion to approve the personnel report? Second? All in favor? Questions or comments? Sorry.
Yes, I just want to recognize the retirees, not by name tonight, but these are important people, and we will be recognizing them at a special meeting in June, and we send our congratulations to them.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Moving on to the administrative report, I will take on consent unless anyone objects. Seeing none, A, acceptance of donation from the Black Flag Giving Fund on behalf of New York Life and its donors, B, acceptance of donation from the Black Flag Giving Fund on behalf of New York Life and its donors, C, acceptance of donation from the Samuel J. Preston PTA, D, acceptance of donation from the Samuel J. Preston PTA Fifth Grade Committee, E, acceptance of donation from the Purchase Elementary School PTA, F, approval of extracurricular clubs, G, approval of CSE CPSC minutes, H, approval of CSE CPSC recommendations, I, approval of 2024-25 school district calendar, J, approval of 23-24 teacher retirement incentive, K, approval of side letter agreement with Teacher School AIDS of Teaching Assistance Association. Do I have a motion to approve the administrative report?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Questions or comments? I just would like to give thanks to the very many donations, the Black Flag Giving Fund, Samuel J. Preston, both PTA and Fifth Grade Committee, as well as the Purchase Elementary School PTA. Thank you all for the generous donations. Do, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none. Moving on to the finance and facilities report, I will take on consent unless anyone objects. Seeing none, A, treasurer's report, November 2023. Wait, A, was there a B?
Dumbler.
Okay, just kidding, I missed it. B, contract for health services, Dobbs Ferry Union Preschool District, C, 2023-24 appropriation transfer. Do I have a motion to approve the finance and facilities report?
Motion.
Second? Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Seeing none. Our next regularly scheduled business meeting will take place on January 24, 2024, here at the Lewis Evans Client Middle School. Do I have a motion to close the business meeting?
Motion.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned. Good night.